I will open up this meeting for the planning board for the town of Maynard. The date is August eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is seven oh three P M. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format meeting. People can participate either through the Zoom link or here at town hall. At this time, Bill, I don't see anyone online. Do you have that correct? I don't see anybody. Okay. Okay. If people join online, I will read the rest of the stipulations, but now I have no one online. So I'll open up the continuation of the public hearing for one fifteen Main Street. This is a special permit modification by the advocate of McDonald Development. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome back. Phil, do you want to give a primer on this? And then we'll turn it over to the team for any updates?
Yes, we've received new landscape plans, new revised site plans, which you do all. On they've gone, I think the commitment is to one access into the municipal lot. We also received, there's a list of waivers that we requested. I mean, um. And I think, um. Mike, you go ahead and you want to give the presentation right on the updates? Um. We haven't had, GPW has not weighed in. Um, I think that anything that they have would be involved involving the municipal lot. So we just, you know, work and proceed however they want. I think that would be something we could potentially condition. Elevations, so when we find the final change, we'll just get any updates to that. Right? And I think with that.
Okay. Um, sorry, I did. I know we've been here a couple times, but for the record, could you just introduce yourself again?
Yes, McDonald McDonald.
David McDonald. No, no, development process.
Michael Scott from Design Collaborative.
You want to update it on this mic or?
Sure, I did bring copies digitally of all the stuff that was provided, but um. So we ran through, I think, five or six things that were additions to the plans, and I highlighted those. So they've been added. Hopefully, so everyone's satisfaction. Um, and I'm just going to go with my. In the order that I had written them down, these may not have been how they. Blow through the last meeting, but um. At the rear door, there was a consultation about adding a ramp from the two rear doors into the parking area. So we did that, understanding it's not an ADA ramp. Being the driveway. Say if you open up.
You have to open.
The third or fourth one. Right.
Okay, let me share a screen with our. All audience here, we have somebody now.
Then we then, well, there was the site driveway that entered from the municipal lot and turned right. To get into the surface parking that was discussion about making it nineteen to twenty feet. We made it twenty feet. Um, we basically went additional two feet into the town parking area. That. All sorry, keep uh.
Yeah, you want to do it or you want me to do?
Not one more, I think, if I show it.
Yeah, I think it might be easier if you just point out where while while you're going down here, let's be able to point out.
Okay. It's actually back. There you go. It's the image, if you want, you're sitting here probably is good.
Spot as any. Right, I want.
All right, so I'm going to go to actually this sheet. Um, so the first thing I was mentioning was the addition of a ramp we created. There was some discussion about there being a step from the um. Pavers onto the pavement, we had a curb shown there, we've eliminated the curb stone. Uh, and so folks walking out of either of the two doors that are at the back or north side of the building. From either the commercial space or the residential space at the first floor. Um. Would be able to walk directly into the parking lot. So if they're wheeling something or pushing something, they don't have to go over a curb. Again, this is not ADA compliant, the ADA route would be um like that. So onto the promenade past this little landscape area into the doors. And of course, interior wise, in the garage floor, which is now a level below, the access would be to the elevator. Right, right across this part of the parking lot. Uh, parking garage. Um, second thing we discussed was the width of the driveways. This was twenty-four feet, we had this at eighteen feet. We were asked to take a look at getting it to nineteen or twenty feet. So what we did was we pushed this wall out two feet. We didn't want to bring this in because there is a grade dropping here. And the farther we pull this over, the more of a right turn. This actually makes the right turn a little simpler. Um. Around that corner, so that's twenty feet. And. There was a question about the height of this wall. This this wall is actually detailed on the next sheet, but it's only about a foot tall at this end and about three and a half feet at this end. Because we've changed the grade so that the grade will slope down along the side of the building, which is depicted. Here, um, so we would have the grade falling away this way. There was a question about could someone sitting here see someone coming out of the garage? And the answer is yes, because you would look right over the top of the wall. Um. Question about the LA plan, which has been updated, I'll get to that in a second because it's not in this set of drawings. Um, it is, but it's been updated again. There was a question about the signage plan. So we originally had a handful of signs noted for the ADA space stop sign here. We added a stop sign at this location and we added, um, you can't see it because of this thing. But we added a no through traffic, no through traffic sign at this location. So folks entering this will understand that they can't get out. We're happy to change that to something else if that's not an appropriate sign. But these are all MUTCD callouts for the various. Uh. Types of signage. The the crosswalk, as I mentioned before, the crosswalk signs are out in the public way. Those have been on since the beginning. And of course, you have the ADA van space located here, so we're showing the ADA with the van accessible. That that was on the previous set.
You know, we're so young, no left.
I believe that's a town. I believe that was a town sign, so. Oh, I think it's, I think it's one of these, but I got to check if that's true or not. So let's see if I can zoom in without losing anything. Yeah, sixteen, seven P L, is that the sixteen, seven?
That's that one that's over by the CBS entrance.
No, that's an R three, two, so.
Three, two.
So where did I, where did we have that?
So.
Uh, boy.
Don't use that sixteen.
Yeah, no, it's this. So even R one, five, that's the, those are the note, oh. That's a W. Uh, I don't remember where we had that. Oh, you know what? That was probably on the um, the original plan set that had the garage. Um. When you were leaving the garage, they didn't much circulating this way. So that probably needs to come off.
Let's you know.
No, that's probably, that's probably a leftover from the first round of drawings. Um, so we've added, uh, but we added the um, the no through, which was the one that we talked about last time. I'll make a note to get rid of that sign. And then there was a list of waivers, which is a separate thing as well. So I'll see if there's anything else on the plans that were requested. Um, the other major changes obviously are that these have been. Um. Those exhibits that we were looking at, the large scale that we could compare. This is the format that the original plans that we provided to Conservation Commission with. Um, we're in, so this was the set of drawings that went to the Conservation Commission and then the GPW for approval previously with that earlier design. So this is. Not, I'm forgetting this maybe the first time we, well, this will be the second time you saw this format. Because we did the first two driveway scenario this way. So we've added back the drainage and utilities. So the grading is, the the detailed grading is on this sheet. Um. This has the utilities, this was not, these were not depicted previously on what you saw. But everything from this building wall. To around here and then out to the river or out to the promenade is as it was before. The changes are that previously there was a great only at the entrance to the building. Um. Because everything went down to the building and we were up high. Uh, when we lowered the grade, we had a great here and we had the pumping out of this great. Uh, to this water quality unit. We've added a great at this location, which is above or at elevation one sixty. Again, we don't want to bring gravity piping network into that bowl below the flood elevation. So this is set at one sixty. Um, and it it actually can gravity into this structure, um, even though the driveways are going down. Uh, and then we've also added a great in this location behind the dumpster. We originally had the gas meters here, there was a conversation about that being my mistake. Those are now here. Um. And so these two grades would then be pumped to this structure, which is a water quality structure. It's noted here, uh, and then that would enter the infiltration system. This, as I mentioned, this has not changed. This was the layout you see from the building wall to the left to the river was approved by DPW in terms of the shut off. Backflow prevention devices, the elevations and the outlet, the location of the drain manhole, which ties into the existing thirty inch pipe that drains the park, the municipal parking lot. None of that has changed. Um, it's just this portion of the site where we now have more water. From this part of the site has to be collected and pumped rather than just a small piece of it. Um. Pre and post hydrology plans, like these obviously changed because originally we had a driveway that ran in here, which was contributing. So there's a little less water contributing to the infiltration, a little less area contributing to the infiltration system, but not significantly. Um, this is, this is actually more or less similar to the original design. The difference is last time we had a driveway here, which was also making its way. So if you were to go through the history of the stormwater report, you would see essentially this current one is essentially what we had the first time. Um, albeit with slightly more overall impervious, and it's pretty much the equivalent to this parking space that we retain. So in the end, there's more green space on the property than originally was there before they demolished the property. The only real green space was pretty much the back of this building, which actually crossed the property line. Um, and then a little bit along the side of the CBS parking lot. So be gaining a little bit of green space on the side of the CBS parking lot, you'd be gaining a little green space around this utility pole. And you'd be gaining green space along the uh, the building here and at the end of the parking lot here. Um, and of course, this is presently parking these, this is essentially parking. So really the loss of green space in the town's lot is here. Which again is only slightly more pavement than if we, if we took this space out, it would essentially be where we were originally. Um, and that's documented in the stormwater report. And then this, this was a detail of the crosswalk, this. There was no change um to the driveway here, other than we moved the grades around movements. We added the guardrail, I did forget that, we did add the guardrail at the head of the spaces on the town property. I had mentioned that previously, uh, that it was an oversight and that's shown on all the sheets. But it's noted specifically on this sheet um for the guardrail. So I think those are all the plan changes. Um, there's also. A list of uh, the landscape plan. Now, I don't know if I'm sharing this screen or am I sharing the other screen?
You know, I'm sharing this, the entire screen has been new or were they sharing the same previous P S as you are sharing this?
Right, so that's how I usually do it, which means this would be.
Yeah. You might want to just.
Unshare and reshare.
Okay. Just reshare. Yeah.
So.
Oh, wait, you screen.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's there. Um. And showing it now, so um, this is the new LA plan. So again, this was revised for the wall configuration here, the width of the driveway. And then the shrubs and plantings along the town embankment, if you will. And we had had, as I mentioned previously, we reconfigured the layout of the um, the trees along the promenade. And there was one in this location, which was in the path of the ADA route, which had been relocated. I don't believe there were any changes along the left side, uh, along the river, there was no need for that. Um. Any other details, these remain from, from the prior plan. But this is dated eight, one, I got this a day or two after I sent in the plans to um. You folks, so that's not part of. Our set, but it can be added, and it is the current plan. For landscaping. And then the last thing that we sent was the um. Well, I just sent the stormwater report, if anyone wants to see it, it's not very exciting. Um. Oops, let's try to find the waivers. And then the list of waivers. That. Oh, site plan modification, I want to bring it to us, thank you. Um. Well, this was in the same format that you received previously. It describes what's going on, and then the first six were actually. The six of the first seven in the previous application, um, all of which I believe are approved. It talks about the size, the amount of land per unit, that didn't change, the number of parking spaces, and the ratio didn't change. Uh, the fact that there's a parking space within ten feet of the rear lot line, there used to be four or five, there's only one now. Uh, the drawings are at scales that are not pre-authorized or required. We actually have a five scale and a ten scale to show greater detail into locations. Um, that was also previously approved. The existing conditions plan prepared by foresight is stamped by Massachusetts P E that was previously approved. They just updated the uh, the plan for us with a little more information. The required intersection curve radius um is twenty-five with an internal curve radius of ten or. And that was previously approved, and we still have that condition um in one case. Um. Two, these two are new. Uh, we eliminated one, which was the angle parking, not meeting the right required size requirements. Um, but these are new. One is that the parking lot is, this is the surface parking lot is a little steeper than five percent, and that was a function of needing to ramp up. To get up above the elevation, above the flood elevation, and then get down to the current elevations or lower, so it's not to increase the flood storage. So it's a little steeper than six percent, not in, not everywhere, but there are spots that are over five percent. Um, so we included that. And then the minimum interior driveway width of twenty feet, we actually achieved twenty feet, but then it necks down as you're going down into the garage, a little less than twenty feet. Because of the grading, so um, that driveway, the site internally is over twenty. It's just when you get down towards the garage that it's under twenty. So those are the two waivers. And that covers everything that. I have in my notes. And I guess the other thing is we obviously lowered the building a little bit for um, Mr. McDonald's request. That's reflected on the grading and all the utility layout inside the building, which will be coordinated with the plumbing engineer.
So sorry, that last item, is that something we talked about last time or is that a new one?
It's uh, we were looking to achieve the lowest floor elevation we could get to create that maximum headspace. So we were able to get a few, you know, another few more inches to create more headspace. That still doesn't attain the required hyphen van, but it does requite, so so folks are bringing a pickup with a cap on it. They will.
True.
Scrape the cap off.
We're talking inches from what was presented.
It's, yeah, it's a little bit lower.
Okay.
And it was already sloping down inside the building, we just lowered it at the entrance.
I don't think we need to talk about inches.
Yeah. So I think that covers everything that I had. Um. So.
Yeah. Bill, do you want to add anything to this? That seemed like it was comprehensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to the board for questions. Um, I think. I think we, we can talk, we don't need to categorize it, you can talk about anything. Any comments?
I have questions, few questions on my.
For the waivers?
Yeah.
Okay, right.
You, for the uh, I believe that was seven, could you show the areas that are greater than five percent? I assume we're talking like drive area.
Uh, no, I'm talking actually to parking lot, the parking spaces, was my understanding was referring to the parking spaces. Um, but I can pull it up. Okay, that is. So it would be, it would be in this part of the parking lot.
You mind zooming in?
Yeah. Yeah, so. I always wondered what the uh, twenty foot circles were that were shown clearly on the plan set by um, the former engineer.
Are we still sharing?
I will, we, I don't believe we are.
There should be.
I know, I stopped sharing. So we're talking about this area right in here, and you can see the existing grade is this gray line and the bold line is the, the proposed. The existing grade is this gray line and the bold is the proposed. So we're trying to hold the flood elevations. Um, and then down here, this is the bold line and this is the existing. So in order to meet the flood volumes, we're trying to hold that existing grade. We're flatter over here. Obviously, the ADA spaces, that meant we had to lift things up a little bit, so we had to pull the grade back a little bit. Um, so this is the flattest part of the parking lot.
When you park in those spaces, how tilted are you, the grade?
The grade will be sloping six plus or minus percent, but in this direction. Here, and then it's a little flatter in this direction. This would be the steepest part of the parking lot. These, there's what, five or six spaces through here? These five or six spaces are going to be tilting towards this catch basin, if you will, like it was previously. Because we are again trying to make sure that we don't, you know, alter the grade. You can see we pulled it back here a little bit, so this part of the space gets a little flatter. Um, it's just the tail, it's these few spaces through here that would be over the five percent, and then your flatter over here.
And and how does that amount of slope compare to the? The row of spaces in the public parking lot of near.
So those, those spaces are almost too flat, they're like a percent.
No, no, while they're up.
Oh.
They're forty two somewhere off the map, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
So just comparison, it'd be.
I mean, off the top of my head.
Or is it last?
Well, we didn't measure those, but you're talking about all the way up by your place. I'm trying to think of some of the other parking lots that you have, certainly flatter than some of the parking lots that I've been to in Jimmy's site. Um, sites, not the one where you are at ten, but um.
Let's just simplify, it will be more slope or less?
I will, I didn't measure those, but I'm going to say that's probably in that range. As you get up towards um, the end of this parking lot on the way out.
It would be less than this parking at forty-two summer.
The public parking against forty-two?
The parking we have at.
Inside the lot.
Yeah, that.
In the lot is more great than this one we.
Yeah, that's true, the, the public side I didn't measure it. I have driven it once or twice, but I can't.
Less great than the your parking lot at forty-two. Oh, so that's not.
Yeah.
I kind of have no concept of.
So over and.
There's no, it's, it's, it's not good when you open the door and it swings around, but if it's a little bit.
And this isn't so that you're not dead sideways, you know?
Is this, this is sloping in if a car parks, it's.
Nose is down.
Yeah, the nose is, if they're pulling in, the nose is down, and that's really like a sixth grade, six percent slope.
Yeah, it's a little bit off, so that's correct.
If I do the math, right, that would be a over an eighteen foot span, say a truck, that would be a one foot drop, six percent slope.
It would drop about a foot from the front, yeah, that's twenty feet, right, one to twenty, which is your requirements at one to twenty. Um, we're about like one and seven, one and eight.
And that's why we have those nice things in between the promenade and parking lot to keep the cars that aren't in park from rolling into the.
Right, so you have a, you have a guardrail.
Yes.
Along there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's actually on this, I believe, on this set, or maybe it's on the LA set.
And the other question about the parking relief is the last item. Uh, well, actually, that's not really a thing. This question, oh. Do you need relief for the distance behind like the? The surface lock handicap.
These space, so we have twenty-four feet to here. We modeled, because this isn't the parking space, we'll go back to this sheet. Because this is not a parking space, even though we're under twenty-four here, we did run a van that, the van can pull into the space and come back.
About the long range.
Uh, the twenty-four. The, for the twenty, so the minimum width is twenty feet, I don't, did not mention this. But I'm going to say that's not, that's going to be right around twenty feet if this is eighteen and a half. So I suppose that's an area where we're under twenty internally as well as this.
Are you saying that the, the state to the right of the handicap parking is considered the driveway width of twenty feet?
Are you, well, from this stripe to this.
Parking base having designated width and this one papered down, and I don't know if it meets our requirements, and if it doesn't, it, they need to have for the.
So it's, so, okay, so that's separate from the internal drive is what you're suggesting. Where we're at eighteen feet, we've asked for a waiver for less than twenty. If, if you're talking, it needs to be twenty behind the space, twenty-four rather. Um, but I'm guessing we're under twenty here.
See, you'll have to.
Well, we've asked for less than twenties internally.
So now it's just referencing both the entrance to the garage and.
Right, and the other one didn't, I looked at the old waiver, there wasn't no specificity as to where it was, so I just. So on some of the other, um, other ones, so I just left it that way. But um, I can put a dimension on this, and that would be the um, the width that's required.
Okay, so, all right, well, that's fine, you're just clarifying that number eight references multiple.
Yeah.
Move.
We moved curb lines around to. I've Jimmy look at stuff so many times, I didn't keep track of where everything was every time I moved them, but. Uh, we hadn't really changed the center of the parking lot, other than for this um, driver, but we could really add that dimension. Which will be less than twenty. By I.
Other questions from the board?
Um, landscaping, just remind me, who is going to be approving the stuff from the promenade? Is that Justin?
That sound was already, yeah, approved, but it was Jeff that did that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. The only thing we changed there was, we had to change some of the location of the three well.
Yeah, yeah, I remember.
And then we added a note on there about the types of plants that will be planted along the murder bank.
Yes, I know.
I believe it, oh, four, it's where your, yeah, okay. Something I forgot, but I can discuss it.
But.
And then the. As I understood, Conservation will be looking at this in more detail, or they're.
Correct.
They, they will.
Yeah.
At their September meeting? Okay.
Yeah, so far, I mean, just from my perspective, um, you know, the plants look great, everything else is, is what we've discussed. Um, you know, getting the grass out of there and setting in your ants to really stabilize the area. And so, yeah, they'll, they might have, you know, them. They can talk about like the exact features at that September meeting, but location of everything, that's what I'm most concerned about, and I have a problem. Um, with what's going on, and and plus, you know, they have to really tight spaces. Um, so as much as you really want as many trees as possible, um, I think they were able to, to work with around the building and not, you know. Potentially cover their uh, their roots to go into the building, so I appreciate that too.
Any other questions? Um, Jeff, any questions?
One there.
Um, the one, a couple of questions, turn it, Mike, that's a good um. So this area here of landscape, I mean, yeah. Um, if I'm standing to the left of that in the parking lot and I'm looking at it, is it going to look flat or is it going to be sloped?
Sloped down. Right, this will be sloping down, not as, as steeply as the driveway, so that's why the wall comes into play here.
Okay.
And then this wall is to retain this slope so that you can get in and out of the parking lot. Because this falls, we tried to keep this area as flat as possible for the turning movement. Which means this got steeper and this got steeper, and I'm going back, not this time, I'm talking about the previous um, version. It's essentially the same as the previous version, we picked up a few inches of drop over this end and this end.
And when you say down, do you mean top to bottom down and left to right down?
So this will be sloping down, this will be sloping flatter, this, so this will be sloping. This direction, this will be sloping this direction, but not as deep.
You're, you're going to kind of mimic the grades that are adjacent to it, and it's going to sort of match.
Right, we just didn't want, we didn't want, we have, we needed a place for the uh, the gas meters, and we needed a place for a manhole that also was out of the pavement, so.
And that, okay.
That, that's correct, so the meters will be against the building here.
Okay.
And the man, there's a manhole probably where the shrub is.
Um, so that, you said you're going to need any other safety apparatus in there? Um. Uh, maybe ballers aren't the right sort of metals, but anything else is going to be needed?
Um, I mean, these are, I would say no, because the wall, there's, we have a curve up to the wall here, it'll be a six inch curve. Um. And then this is a short wall, this, and then this is going to be flat, but there will be some, I'll call it slow paving to make up the grade. To make up the grade from the garage floor up to this. Um, that's shown with grading plan, so that will be somewhat steep, but it's not long. Um, so anything that would be hit in here would be hardened surface. Um. And I don't see putting ballards in there. It's just going to reduce the width of the open area.
My thought is, is it going to be like a hole?
This won't be a hole. This will not be a hole. This will be elevated above this part of the driveway. Yeah, so this will be two to three feet. This will be higher by two or three feet than this.
Yeah.
That's.
Um, you you mentioned during the waivers that we would need a waiver of number seven for additional um. Maximum slope is about five percent. Can you remind me what the. What are maximum slopes are for the drive aisles here as well?
Yeah, so that's actually shown on that last exhibit that was part of, I'm not sure if I'm sharing this, but I will. Well, that was shown on this drawing. Catches up.
I guess, were there any changes since last time we talked?
Uh. The, yeah, as I mentioned, we picked up a little bit, so we've got a little bit like a percent or two steeper at the top and the bottom. Um, but not in the middle and let me see. Yeah, so those slopes are shown. On this plan, which I don't think I'm sharing, so. Well, same, this is the same layout that you saw previously. We show the dumpster access here. Um. What we, what we did was because. We had data from the old, you'll see there's some additional spot grades through here. We went out and resurveyed that parking lot. Because it was so critical to try to pick up any depth we could. Um. And as it turns out, I think, and this may have been a discussion I had with DDPW some time ago, the grades that were shown in the parking lot. For this portion of the lot, well, I think on eighty and eighties. They were on twenty nine data, not eighty eight data, so it was about a seven tenths difference, which we confirmed when we looked back out there, so. We were targeting a grade of sixty four, but it's really only just barely sixty three, so that's where we picked up barely a foot of drop. Um, so we see a few more shots and what that and then what we did was we reran these profiles, so. Previously, the cars were shown coming downhill from the town's parking, but they're actually going to go up to the end of the parking and then go over. That's, we knew intuitively we were not going downhill from. From back here because we've been out there enough, so when we resurveyed it, we verified that. Um, so what you see is. There's a little lip right here and then you start going downhill. This is the truck going to, so you see the grades are twisted. So the maximum grade of any of the routes runs are shown, so that's a sixteen percent, one and six ish, one and seven ish. Um. And then it gets flatter in the middle, roughly the same grade as the parking lot over here. Um, and then we show the vehicles going in and out of the garage or around the corner.
Can you let some piece of. Sorry, this is me.
So. Um. So we have the, we have the grade down, we have the relatively flat. Center and then we end up into the garage. And so what you're seeing here is actually the continuation of the grade in the garage for the first. Um. So many feet. To allow us to drop a little more and gain that headspace in the garage. It also takes the curse off of. The steeper slope into the flatter slope, so that was necessary, so this vehicle would. Which again is modeled with a very low uh, front overhang approach angle of approach. And then for the pickup truck, so you see the grades are sixteen percent, fifteen percent in that range. Whereas before we were at like thirteen and a half, fourteen percent, so we definitely gained that little bit extra debt.
Um, my next question is about signage. Did we change the signs along Main Street on the public way?
No, we didn't change anything in the street. The the signs that I saw previously approved were. Um.
So I'm, what I'm seeing here is a yield to pedestrians in a crosswalk.
There's one, there's one here and then there's one on the other side of the CBS driveway.
Sure.
These were, these were the two signs, yeah. And that's, that's some of what's shown up here. So there's that and then there's that. And then the striping of the crosswalk is shown on one of the plans that's out of, not to skip, not to your standard scales. Which this is was taken from the previously approved plans for the uh, reconstruction of um. A new ramp, the new curving, the addition of a ramp and curving, and then. Uh, that follows the old striping.
None of that's changed.
None of that changed, correct.
Um, if you could just. Go back. First time change.
Yep.
Moving on, bottom right, there's two signs there. One of them says W L dash two, which is a person in a yellow. And the yellow diamond.
So you have the eleven dash two and the sixteen, so these two.
And I'm not seeing the sixteen dash seven, are you seeing sixteen dash seven? Sixteen dash, I mean, that's. Does it mean sixteen dash nine feet? Where are you? Anyway, I I just want to make sure that. Yeah, this brand. Oh, seven P L versus.
All right, so I'll have to check this sign call out because this says sixteen, seven.
Yeah, just I'm guessing it's referring to the ahead. Um. You know, but let's just get it right on the hands now.
Sixteen nine P, it's yes. All right, I will check.
Nine P is the ahead of this.
Yeah. The eleven two.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's something's not right there.
Yeah, something's just not right.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, so we'll confirm that.
Yeah, I trust you better. Because when you go on through this work. You're gonna be, you'll be standing there and bill and they're gonna go, that's the sign that's on the plan.
Even though, well, I'll fix it to whichever one's right or whatever is right, I'll make sure they're correct.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I get, yeah.
I think that was on my question. Anything else important? Well, at this point, this is the time where I ask if there's any other additional information. Sorry, I'm, I won't take public comment. There's some public comments here tonight. Um, I see there's. Susan, you're welcome to enter a public comment or not. Um, I mean, you're welcome to enter a public comment or not. I think we're leaving it public tonight. But you know. Um, but this is the point where I ask if there's any additional information that the applicant would like to provide before we close. Bill, is there anything else we should discuss? Do you have anything else pertinent? Um, so you brought up the uh, DPW's review of the of the um, interaction with public space. Um, my thinking is that in the past, they provided review as a condition. And I think that's, we can talk about that. Um, the other alternative is to what continue the hearing until they're reviewed.
Yeah, I um. I I. Don't hate that would be necessary, it'd be cause in this case. Um, the obvious, you, have you scheduled for the select board yet for the um? The access agreement?
No.
Okay, so we could just condition it on that.
You know, what are the changes relative to the public entry? Have we, have we changed the number of parking spots we're looking to request?
There's actually a gain of one.
There's a gain of a parking spot. Um, the location is similar, as I recall, compared to the the previous plan.
Essentially that one state that they're safe because we are.
So, so there's not much change on the interaction regarding.
Um, there's a garden at all.
Okay, sure. It, I can, I consider that to not be substantial changes. And I think conditioning is reasonable.
Because of that, that the fact that they have to go through select board, select board and will, you know, go into detail with Justin and Wayne about that interaction. It just doesn't seem very fair for us to kind of continue that conversation when they have to just redo it on.
I said, yeah, for the, I mean, I think if you, if the board was inclined to condition the DPW review. You know, we would just word it in such a fashion that DPW, if they had something they uncovered, it would be. Uh, exclusive of our approval. They're still be subject to DPW, whatever they come up with.
Okay, so there's.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't. Um. Think there'd be any problem with that.
Any other information?
Uh, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Uh-huh.
Um, all in favor of closing the hearing, um, by hand, we're all here present. That's five zero, Bill, to close the hearing. Um. So, you know, just cover from from the beginning, um. The, this is a special permit. Modification, request for modification of special permit, so our considerations are for. The changes compared to the the original designs that were approved previously.
That's correct. There's um, what I would recommend the board. Do, um. Would be to run through. The previous approval and things that were did not change. I would just adopt by reference and revoke. So for example, the special permit, special permit for downtown Overly District. Um, I would just, the board could adopt it by reference that it remains the same. Unchanges the previous approval. Um, the site plan would be as amended, the waivers would be as amended. Um.
So can we wrap it, right?
Right.
I don't have that in front of me, if you can.
We're gonna pull it out.
Um, because what I'm seeing is that the request is to modify section ten point four. For a special permit and then uh, the site plan. And then it will be the waiver list as well as you said.
That's right, but what we would want to do would be um, acknowledge. That everything else remains the same. Um, we we, so for example, like I said, the special permit criteria. It's not going to change from what they did.
And and in general, we was eyeing about spike point mostly revises.
The designer view, my only question about the design review. Um, is that we approved it previously and I would imagine one page could be amended to reflect the new, any new structural changes that would be there just so the board. And uh, has a visual of what. What was changed by this amendment and where, so I think the entrances would be a little different and so I think it would be a one page. Condition for that, just provide it, you know.
Let's, yeah, let's look at it.
All right, but um. And then we have the question about, well, do you want me to pull up the the previous decision we'll go through?
It would be helpful.
Okay.
Yes. Get a little awkward this conversation. This is something we should just prep and do at our next meeting. We could do that, but it's true. We don't need to have a vote. Um, tonight, there's no regulation with the cars that's loaded at the moment. And, you know, they're going constant month, right? Well. They're good. The timeline matters that much. Hard to imagine that we're going to be able to catch everything you need to catch. There is a lot here. I agree with that. Um, and I want to get it right as well.
Well, for example, just to give the board, I I drew up a little. Of how our votes would, what we would be looking at. Um. And uh, most, a lot of this would remain the same, like I said, so for example. Special permit criteria, this would be the first thought. For the, for multifamily and we we would. With the reduced area. Uh, downtown Overly District would remain unchanged. Uh, the consistency with that, the design right review criteria should remain unchanged and we'll just make sure that we have. As a condition, the the um. Architectural um, elevations updated, that everything would stay the same that was approved here. Um. Materials, whatnot. Um. And then we would have, um. And that that would be. All we had other than the waivers and the site plan. So the the waivers we have. Um, represented night, there was a change to the waiver that Bill had about um. Adding multiple locations for condition eight so that the reduced driveway was. Uh, went covered multiple locations, that would be. Just in addition to that. Um, the conditions of approval I would want to run through, but looking through them, um, I didn't find that much that. Was. That we would change because of this, so. It, you know, I. It it's up to the board, I, but I um, think we could go through these and and. There's a few we might even remove, um, but I would think we, the board, if they're comfortable, go through it. I don't know what we would do in the next two weeks. Um, other than just tidy up. What's there again, but um, so board's call.
You just, you give me a second to look through. Okay, so what I'm considering is that there is.
You have more.
Number by numbers that we need to get right, so that it is a. Earl and complete decision, and I want to make sure. Like I would for any applicant, make sure that we are getting things right, that we need to get right.
This is sort of like, what are we going to add to the condition?
Well, so, yeah, we're drafting the dish decision. You know, we we could, we could do it. The decision might, you know, we have time to draft the decision, which we would. We would do it.
So we. Let me ask these questions.
Yeah.
It. Through the SAG report, this is saying that we need to. That the site plan needs to be approved through section ten point five point one.
Right, yes.
And then there's a special permit. For the DOD under section ten point four. And then there's a DOD special permit under section nine point four point six.
Right.
Both of those would need to be. Reissued?
No, I would just, I I would say that we've done this with other um, boards. Matter of fact, we just did with the zoning board uh. Two meetings ago, we had, if. In this case, we would just adopt the conditions by reference, so. You know, the the benefits to the downtown Overly District and so on that we went through.
Yeah.
When the last one. We just carry them over, we, but but we could review them, I mean, if you want, but I don't, I don't think those were affected by this. The same would be for the 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 um, standard uh, special permit.
I I thought because it's an amendment. That they could just, you could just add what you needed, like it would basically just be something that. Those five things that we talked about that need to get added, but just go right on top of it. We wouldn't need to necessarily, like, we're not writing a new decision.
And we're not issuing a new special permit.
Yeah.
Right?
Because you already issued the second, you're modifying.
Right, so you're adopting that the conditions remain the same. With your previous.
This goes to my point of maybe we want to do this at the next meeting.
Well, not, not for that.
This conversation. Figured out and just written out and ready. Because we shouldn't be debating or conjecturing against this one.
Well, I don't think of a special, of a special point, though, I, and the special permit point. I I think that's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. We either, if if the board wanted to change it, they could change it, but to go forward with anything else, I would. Recommend that you find it remains consistent and adopted by reference to the. Earlier conditions, but it's just really just two sets of circumstances on that.
So I was not prepared. Um, to go through the special permits, this, I was focusing almost strictly on the site plan review for all of this. And so I I was prepared.
Which are the amendments, that's correct. So exactly, this is more for for your reference when we, when we're talking about, okay, we're amending this section. That you guys know exactly what we're, you know, that it was a sixteen page decision, a very long decision. Um, that that you know where we're referencing, so when. Um, that, that you know where we're referencing. So when, when we're just, when it just says like nine point four, four point six, point three, point E. Amended to like, um.
It just, yeah, the, the others are just remains consistent. You wouldn't want to adopt a site plan that was. Out of compliance. And that's what I was. There's nothing, there's no change. Okay. So. I, I guess I was confused because I, I was under the impression that we needed to go back. Then, then re, and, and look at the special permit criteria again. Um, and I, that's what I thought I heard, but that's not what I was. I would recommend, I would recommend you, uh, we look at it. I mean, and, and it's, it's the, the seven. You know, circumstances, just so, and that, but I think it would just, I don't think anything would change, but you know. I, I can't imagine anything would, but I noticed, uh, we, we did this a couple of weeks ago with the zoning board. We had a very similar. Situation and the simplest way was just to go, you know, adopt it by reference. The, the, um, special permit criteria is still met. And we've, we've looked at that, um, nothing that they're doing. Undermines the board's previous decision. Okay, so as I understand this, then we. We can. The request is to consider the approval of the site plan modifications. That's right. And then you're, you're, you're saying that it would be helpful to. And to review the special permit criteria and just restate that the special permit criteria. I, 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 I. Yeah, I would. It would be really for the, to solidify the decision and just the board looked at it. Everything remains. Uh, consistent. Okay, that's better because. That's what I was envisioning for tonight was that we were simply looking to approve the site plan modifications. And a, approve the designer. Well, there's no designer view, but it, it state that it is. Remains consistent. Remains consistent. Right, right. Okay. And so all you're saying is that. We need to, we, we need to look at the special permit criteria and say that it remains consistent with the permit criteria for ten point four, nine point four. So which is right here. Yeah, everything's right on there. Okay.
And, and then when it comes to conditions. All of the conditions that were set forth. You know, which ones do we, do we want to specifically change or do we have very different conditions that we want to put down now? Or are we good with, with what? So I'd be more focused on the conditions than I would be.
This is a full waiver list. This is an addition. This is the new full waiver list.
Yeah. Yeah. Because what was removed, just we're adding.
Um, I'm fine going, that's, that seems way simpler than what, what I heard initially. Maybe I missed it. I stated it earlier. It doesn't matter what I heard. So, um, but I think that's way simpler. I'm, I'm fine going through it. You have. You know, substantial concerns about that, but I think it's actually, I think it's way simpler than we prepare. Which is about the site line review.
I think it's not simple, but maybe it's.
You could also vote for this. And then after you guys are voting to amend, then our competition and then vote to.
I think we can use. I would first, is can I do, is can I make it all one motion or should it be several motions? My suggestion would be that we, uh, start, we run through. We do the conditions approval to scoot through them. I don't, and, uh, that would be. Um, okay, let's start with the condition and see if they're.
Yeah.
I mean, they were pretty thought out when we did them last time, so it's, um. We have them in front of us. Yeah, I know, um. We said.
The conditions start, uh. Um, do you guys want to copy? So you guys. Oh, you're good.
Six.
Mike, you want to copy the ball first again?
I can miss you.
It's okay. It's just a tiny screen. I can't be that far away, so I assume everyone else can.
So. Oh my, there's twenty four conditions. Okay, are you talking conditions or did you want to go through the, the? All right, let's go to conditions then.
Great.
Yeah. All right, uh, the new conditions have drafted out what we would have. Uh, as the board wants to hear them or we go through these first, whatever is your pleasure. How many new conditions? I, well, just what I, I drafted three. Uh, we have to come up with the condition about the, um. DPW. Which is one I, I, I'll words with that, but the, the.
So that would just be amending, uh, condition three.
I'm not sure about that, um. The, this was around the previous plan. These were, um, so it, yeah, let, let, let me run through. I'm actually, I'm doing a one eighty. Um, I didn't realize there's twenty four, I forgot, I forgot there's twenty four conditions on this. Yeah. And. Lot of a bore plate. I, what I want to do now. Is to discuss the conditions that agree that you have built and we can discuss those. Um, and then. I, I do want to table this decision to the next hearing. Um, so I want to go through these twenty four conditions. That's it. So I want to know how many more conditions are. And ensure that we have what's needed. Um, and I think that's going to take a little while. And then I want to be prepared, um, to have. Um, on, on our next. Meeting, um, a review of the conditions. And then, um, we can make motions and see whether we end up. That's whatever. So tonight I want to look at conditions and then look at waivers. And then next time we'll have site plan approval. For consideration, the conditions lined up exactly how we want them. And then. Um. It's the waivers.
Now, my question would be, yeah. If, if some of these conditions, the clinical conditions are no longer relevant, for example, you know. Number four references, specific memorandum, we don't want to be a new one.
It's not going, well, the thing is, is, is they asked about amending the development agreement, right?
Right.
At this point, it hasn't happened. So there's no, this, this should be unaffected. I would think that prior to, um, that, you know, that, that condition stands there. Um, if they're already done. Then they're done.
Yeah.
But if we're done, you know, we just, if all conditions remain in effect, except this one or this one. Um, I don't. You know, I don't know if all these were done with DPW. I don't see any reason to remove them. Um, and it, the, the. Where it alludes to development agree, agreement. That's still stands. It's got to be an executed. Um.
But we referenced.
Reference what? Well, like number two, you'd probably strike because that's been done. Cause the building permits have already been issued.
So when, when it comes to like the actual words that they need to, you know, all of those, those usually get it done behind this. Anyway, after you guys have decided, um, those things. So I just, I think in the essence of time. You know, we could already be happening through, through these conditions. Just go through and amend, not amend, amend, not amend. And then allow us to work.
Is council going to need to review these conditions as amended? Depends what we come up with, but I, not from what I've seen, I wouldn't. I mean, if, if the board feels better, I certainly would run a by it. I, you know, do that frequently. Um.
These conditions were originally run through.
And these are, yeah, these are all from council originally. That's why, yeah. Well, I don't think we're going to be changing anything on the existing conditions, except like something like number two, where it's already done.
Okay, let's go through, let's go through it.
Shall I go, shall we go through the conditions?
Let's go through it.
Okay. All right, so. Um.
This is number one, what is the aforementioned. So how could we have one with this?
Yeah, the aforementioned would be what's alluded to in the beginning of the decision. So whatever the new plan's date is. We're going to say, you know, the original plan was approved in twenty twenty one, blah, blah, blah. Uh, just revise plan dated, whatever the revision plan is. And that will be at the beginning of the decision. So it'll say. You know, that. It'll reference the plan that's being alluded to. A condition one basically just says that, you know, that the building commissioner is going to determine if it's done. Um, consistently with the plans and the, um. Number two is no longer necessary. I, I'm trying to think, I.
Or do we just leave it in there? Oh, we want a new one?
No, we're.
You don't have.
We don't have one now, but they want a new one. So we, I mean. That's, that's a separate action. So I, I wouldn't. Well, they last.
They have a development agreement, so that's done. I apologize. That was key access.
Okay, so development agreement, I vote we just leave it because it, it had to be done. So.
Yeah.
It, it none.
But we'll need some reference.
We can do that.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, number three.
I think just.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, Bill. Wait, wait, what did you say on number two? We need a reference?
Just leave two as it is, I think.
Yeah, aren't we going to add something at the end about an access agreement?
This is going before the select board for the.
This is development agreement talk about.
That's going to be.
Reiterate, yeah. So I think reiterating thing, the, the. Condition and access agreement is fine.
Yeah.
And then we'll, um, we'll edit like exhibit G and all of those things. Um.
Number three is still remains.
I think in number three, we'll take out, um, all the comments referred to VHB letters exhibits. All the things are no longer applicable.
Yeah.
Have you, have you been?
In the exhibits at that point, they're not the.
Um.
Correct.
Okay. Exhibits. And that one, I'm going to need your help with two on that. We'll go through what has been addressed. There's that other language below on three, the very bottom paragraph of three.
Yeah, I don't think that's, it's no longer relevant.
Good. I'm sorry, I thought exhibits, the letters.
They live it. The exhibits were included as, uh, exhibits to this decision. So they're, they're, they're going to be tagged on to the end of this decision to be recorded.
It was seventy page, so I, that is not.
But yes, those are the letters reviewing.
But do we have to? Add to this for the final review of the changes? Is that the deal? We got to add something here?
We're going to edit them. So we're going to attach an amended. Version. So in that I can either, I can do it multiple ways. We can either. Strike out what we don't want and add what we do, or we just kind of start with a new document and say amended, attach it. And so when they file it with the registry of deeds, they'll file referring to the last decision. So they'll always be late, no matter what.
So the list of exhibits will probably also contain. The new stormwater, water plans we.
Exactly. Yeah. So the, the, the stuff that they'll all have to, the new amended version is going to have. As an attachment, the old plans and the old decisions. So it's going to be like a thousand page.
Right.
Um, so we'll figure that one out. I think we can, uh, reference registry of deed, like what's already registered. So that way you don't have to re-register, but.
Hmm.
Different, different issue. Um. I think four is, uh. Is redundant.
We'll just leave it. The less we change, the better. This will be.
Then on that, um, leave five. Leave six.
Yeah, leave five, leave six. And this.
Uh, leave seven.
Your seven.
Yeah, seven's great.
We don't have enough to mark.
No.
No.
The E V. Um.
Eight would be the same as inspectors.
So, so, so nine, how do we feel about maintaining? Uh.
And, and in closing the hearing, um, can I ask clarifying questions to the applicant at this point? Mm-hmm, there's no new information. There's no new information. So I'll say that again. You could ask clarifying questions, but. I, so what I wanted to ask them.
Right.
If they wanted to. How, what they felt about some of these conditions. Oh, that would be new information with it.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, I think that's.
But I don't know why we're asking about the status. Yeah. But that, that, that's not about the site plans. It's just about, so I, I don't know what the rules are when it comes to that. New information would be if we had accepted. Public input or letters or, uh, or, or new revisions of plans after the hearing had closed. I don't think clarifying a, um. Yeah, a, a condition or, or asking them how. It affects them or, or if they think it should be changed as new information. I think that would just be the board's, part of the board's deliberations and clarifying information. How's the seven thousand dollars number going? Is it fine? Do you mind if we will? Well, it. Right now.
You're asking us. What?
You spoke to me to balance of seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Do you know love that? But I mean, why would we love that? So we could not do that. If you're going to ask.
Cars, we don't.
We always pay the bill, I mean.
Okay.
But to maintain that just seems.
What's, what's going to happen now, which is very different from the last, and so we didn't do another period, right? So on this side, so there wouldn't be. A peer review account to refer to. Now. If something were to come up and they, we do, or like, hey, you know, we really need a peer reviewer, um.
Or site inspection.
Yeah, like site inspections are right, right. Site inspections are. The funny number two, it's just a funny number. Yeah.
It, it is. Usually we go with five, um.
Can we just make it to as one?
I think decrease it to five.
Five is just a typical number.
The very odd.
Thank you. Do you want to change that to five? Yes, yeah, it's just the, that's the typical number. I wanted to give you that number.
So the site inspection period will have to be reassigned for any periods.
No, that might be, well, yeah, you're right. That's right. Yeah, it would be our new period.
So.
Unless it's a DPW, yeah, DPW has their specific things that they're. Would use, uh, the town engineer for. Uh, ten is, um.
Ten's fine.
Yeah. And DPW, that's what, that's. This is about quarterly reports when we happen to. The town engineer. Yeah.
I mean, we're on the site like weekly, so I'm not, I'm not too concerned. You get all of our information every time I called in and that's for it.
These are suspicions that they, that, um.
So this is where we got construction. Yeah, thanks, Patrick. So, um. Do you feel like anything needs to change?
So clearing sedimentation controls, drainage and treating.
So like some of these things are just outside of the jurisdiction, to be honest, um, and they're in my jurisdiction. So I'm a little uncomfortable with how this is written, but, um. You know, when it comes to drainage that is connected into the stormwater system, that's fine. You know, town engineer can, can be inspection, inspecting that, but. Um, you know, infiltration system construction, that's. That wouldn't be under his jurisdiction.
You clearly read my words.
Yeah.
Well, um. Yeah, the order conditions stormwater conservation commission, which we know. Uh, thirteen would stay the same. Um.
Are we putting it by card?
There wasn't. There's one on this, Nancy.
Yeah, there's, there's one.
Oh, yeah.
There's.
Which is separate, yeah. I was thinking those are separate, um.
And then the DA for the promenade and.
So. Do we have to modify this to also include the. That little landscaping in the town parking lot, or is that going to be, uh, addressed as an add-on condition?
I think that we just update the landscape plan date.
Yeah, so the select board is going to have to make that decision because they have to approve it. So. We.
Gaitments of that landscape.
And that's what the select board will, it's under their jurisdictions, their property.
And I'm talking about. Do we want a condition? I mean.
The applicant said in the hearing. That they would maintain it.
We change them.
So. My question is. Would we properly put it as a condition or do we just say that's. Development agreement where the town has to include both culminate in that area. development agreement with the town has to include both culminating in that area that you.
I do understand, and I prefer that all things is not.
Well, since we said responsibilities for the promenade, can we just add and other town owned land or something?
I would.
But this town doesn't own the promenade. That's. No, no, I meant them separately, the promenade and the strip of property.
The landscaping and every corner. Do the sidewalk.
No, but I mean, can we just add it to number fourteen? Can we say for the promenade? And the, you know, whatever it says, the strip of landscaping between the town-owned parking lot and the uh, uh, railings at the north end of the, you know, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Yeah, we're gonna say the landscaping, the town parking lot.
I hear you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do what, Bill? How did you word that?
The promenade and other town-owned lands that were discussed and shown on the landscape.
Not other town-owned lands, but town-owned.
Well, and actually, yeah, I mean, town-owned land, yeah, the landscape being on town-owned land as shown in the landscape plan. That would be, that's it.
Yeah.
Fifteen is, uh, again, not in the jurisdiction of playing for.
Well, the condition is, but. But those items are, I agree, the items are not.
There were, I mean, it was all for reasons, so.
Just leave it, it's fine, um. Doesn't change it. Um, there has been no modifications to the deliveries, so sixteen doesn't change. Seventeen is applicable. That's the ADA clients, of course. Why that's a condition, it is, um, but a law.
Yeah, I, I think it's redundant.
It's redundant. I don't remember what nineteen was all about. You can say. It's insane, right?
Yeah.
One discovered by, uh, numbers, but it can't just say it's.
Are you okay with the, um, instruction times? Eight now, a six, well, seven, eight, nine, ten.
No reason.
Seven, six.
The others.
That's right, that's.
Yeah, I mean, those look really standard. I mean, I don't want to change them.
Just think we heard that if it, if Jimmy, if Jimmy looks at it and it's like a very good question, we're like, do you like?
Yeah, no, I get it. But I, the other question I asked about that, that other number was relevant to where we're at in the process. I don't, I don't want to modify that, it's true. I'm fine with the rest of it.
The rest of these are all in the, these, these are in the, the bylaws.
Bill, what were the, so what are the three? How did you add the break conditions?
Um, that while we, we discussed one, what's, what's that?
I'm lying on three, 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 four, three, seven.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm lying on twenty-three, twenty-four, does not reset.
They've already done. I mean, they already started. Yeah.
Yeah, but.
I mean, we could, if we want to strike them, those are the ones you strike, really.
Say it with restart, like if they don't.
Twenty-four, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five, one, twenty-four, is that restart with the amendment or is that clear?
I, you know, that's a good question. That I, I would. We could wordsmith that. Um, or just, you could just leave it after we, and add a.
I, I just, whatever we have to do to, I don't want these guys having to come in and.
No.
Six months to, because that was not the way it was.
Well. I mean, if, if we struck twenty-three, okay, they've already started substantial construction. And they've, they've gotten a special permit.
So just leave it.
Right.
I don't want them on.
Yeah.
Tomorrow you, you, you stop and then you don't start again when you go, you're building permits, and there's two years that allowed us to.
I just leave it, yeah. Because they're already, they're already done.
Oh, but I think you guys will also, that's done in two years.
Um, so my conditions that I had, uh, where the DPW condition, we'll, we'll have to wordsmith that about, you know, how we're gonna.
Which, which, which area?
Well, that's, that, that's because DP, yeah, DPW has not finished their review for the, uh, primarily for the entry into the municipal lot.
Right, but that, hold on, hold on. DPW does not, I completed their review of the modifications as presented, right? It's a modification, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so the condition is fine to have initially that DPW will, will review and do modifications as presented. And whatever.
What is under, I think, number three?
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah. Under, what'd you say? Number three?
Yeah.
So you think we just really just tweak number three then?
Yeah.
Do you? Rather than a new condition?
Well, how about you guys?
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll come up with something for that, yeah. Okay. My next suggested condition would be, um, uh, architectural elevation shall be updated to reflect the change. They're just, they're gonna add just a supplemental page so that any of the, we want to basically ensure that the, the building is the same as what was approved, design-wise.
Right, we got those at the last.
We did, but we didn't get with a new. Um. Did we do some changes since then?
No.
They're all the same on it?
I think there's, I think they've already.
They lowered the building, but I thought we changed some of the outdoor exterior features. Nothing.
Um, just the ramp area, but that's something.
Okay, then we can that one, if you're comfortable with that.
I'm fine with the, the, that architectural plans that were presented at the last.
Okay, so, so we'll just say, well, in that case, so let's.
The reference though.
Well, that, right. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll adopt them by reference. Okay. Um. Uh, the landscaping we've addressed, that was my question about in the public lot that was, like, about that junk out there. And then, then all conditions remain the same.
Um, yeah, is the landscape plan included in the whole site plan approval? Or does that need to be included?
I would, I will reference that in the decision. So in the previous, for example, um, in the beginning of the decision, we talk about, um, like this. So it would be like, you know.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I'd hit all those. I, we'll, we'll get rid of what's, you know, we're not doing now. We'll allude to the, uh, storm, um, report you did. Um, yeah.
Yeah, so number three, so we just need to change the, the new season that ever referencing to the date, the modified date. Um, and then under section nine, the fourth way, we can create, we will, again, uh, reference the new.
I'm not sure you want to change the reference in thirteen, just our modification, you know, thing has a full reference with spec and materials from the items.
Maybe we can say both this a bit of landscape and, and uh, reference materials.
I think we can leave thirteen alone. And just in the plans, the documents submitted to board. Yeah, right.
After the only one didn't have like picture of.
The only one had the specifications. Yeah, it had, yeah.
I lose that.
Brown, no.
Any comments from the board and the wagers?
Are we putting it in the whole thing about, you know, that Mike thinks that you're gonna add dimensions behind the man and passing the spot and signage, you know, changes.
For the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be updated as presented.
I can include the most recent landscape plan and that's it. Because the landscape plan was a spark on the site, that's the thing. But I just shoot that after, essentially, I, I didn't want, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so when we do the final, we met sign, the final place, that that one of the pages, um.
When package, that we done in C.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then won't that, um, go along, be my last. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll need a mylar, and then we'll need the printed set, the final printed set and the electronics set, some of that, you know, like we. Which we all know about.
And the, the best way to do this is to do this all at once, right? Certain criteria considerations, simple approval, waivers, right? There, I, I, these guys work hard and I want them to lock it on its phone and try this.
Well, can we finish? We, we were talking about the waivers. I, I had a couple of questions about the waivers too.
So, but it would, it would be inappropriate to say to approve the site plan tonight and then work on arrested it later for the next meeting, right?
I mean, Chris, in most of the stuff, what we do, like we make a decision, and when the board votes and stuff, we get the, the conditions of approval. And when I craft the decision, the board doesn't craft the decision, you know, uh, we, I draft it, send it around for, you know, changes that are, if there's changes that reflect, you know, the intent of the board, but, um, it's not like we do, you know, we don't really craft the whole, um, decision, you know, in a sitting with the, of the board. We'll have a draft, and if the board's comfortable with this, I know, if not, they, they change it. So, um. I, I guess that would be, I, my recommendation would be, since we have everything here, we're ready to go. I would run through the special permit criteria. I have, like I said, I have a cou- couple of questions, but still about the, um, easy questions about the, um, waivers, and then see if the board, what the board feels like.
Okay, let's do it.
That would be my suggestion. Uh, the waivers, um. Mike, the, the, um, the new waivers, I have not compared these to what's, was the board had, um, voted on earlier, but I think on, um. I think we should, I, I would think it would be a good idea to run through the waivers quickly that we granted, so that anything is outstanding that was missed and that solves, solves you from coming back for another trip or anything like that. Um. For example, this is all the same. You've got waiver one is remaining the same, where you're, that's your density bonus. Um, still providing of seven units. Uh, the relief, the parking changed now, right? I mean, what was your new parking number? I can't.
It's thirty on second.
So, yeah, so that remains the same, okay.
Well, the text of the previous votes on the waivers is more robust than the letter that we produced tonight.
Well, this was on the decision. I wrote this.
Right, but there was a vote on that.
It was a vote on each waiver. Yeah. Yeah, we did. No, I know, we did. We did on that one. It was, um, unusual, but.
So.
The list of waivers that you guys approved was worded the same way that Mike, but during the remand, he went through every single waiver and Bill had to write the decision in each waiver. So that's why it looks more robust than the initial waiver letter.
Yeah, I have the waiver letter here. We'll take a peek at it.
Are, are we gonna be voting on the, this new waiver letter?
Yes. Yes, that, that we have to do.
But voting on the new waiver letter would be broader than the type of votes we did on the other one. I would rather votes, waivers worded similar to the ones that we did before.
I'm not sure.
Three. But very specific. And.
Yeah.
Anymore change, but.
Right.
We just. Say that waiver reviews modified to this in this manner, it's up, but I don't know. You can't just say waiver increased state.
I would, I, what I like to do is make it clean and, uh, vote on the new, a new waiver list, right? So can we do it that way? Sure. Well, we haven't. I, I was just running through these for familiar, to familiarize our, what we've done before. And like, for example, um, number one, it gives the density bonus, you know, in the new waiver letter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, maybe we just jettison all of the waivers, the previous waivers, and say this, this replaces it. That's why I was just suggesting going through it.
Um, I actually trust you guys going through this. And then I, I don't know how to.
So like waiver number three can be changed from saying providing relief around parking spaces, numbers one, fifteen, or nineteen, just to say number one, because it's only one parking space now.
Uh, that, so I, I, I agree with that. It's, it's, I, I to do this in real time, it's not really a spectator sport. I would, I would rather this be done offline and then get the waivers corrected. And then we're able to review and vote. It seems like a lot of work to do right now.
All right.
I mean, generally, I'm seeing. Yeah, I, I just, I, I want this, I prefer this done by staff. And, um, provide us a new waiver list, and then we vote on the new waiver list. And just get rid of all the old waivers. I don't want to try to modify that here in this meeting.
Okay.
But not what Mike has, right?
Um, yeah, it can be with what, what Mike provided.
And why can't we just what I'm, what I provided?
Well, because I don't know how it checks with the previous waivers that were here.
Okay.
And why we had these previous waivers, it's too long ago. I mean, I have a memory on it. And I, 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 I don't want to miss something. I don't want there, there to be conflicts. I just want it to be clean. So the cleanest way to get a decision in this is just to have one, a very clear set of waivers.
Then, 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 I, I think that the best way to do that then would be, Mike, if, if you go through your list of waivers here and compare them to these, submit some new letter with anything that you think needs to be changed so that everything there is reflected in here. Yeah.
No, but what I did was I took the letter that was originally submitted and edited it to a format that matched the request, not that you voted. So it's written as a request.
Yeah.
And that's a difference.
Yeah, so you, you could just change the wording as, as you vote.
And, and as I mentioned for clarification, um, for instance, that waiver that allowed five spaces to be within ten feet, now only allow one. So, um, and the waiver that was for angle parking has been struck. So the first six. Yeah, so this is what I.
So this was the original. Yeah, this was the original waiver list.
I didn't copy verbatim, but, but this Jolala had, I changed it to my format, um, but it, um, it reflects the, the unit density, the number of parking spaces, um, including the ratio, uh, the, um, because it's still twenty-six units. One space instead of five. I note that there's a waiver request for one to five and one to ten. Those plans scales are used in addition to the one to twenty. Uh, number five didn't change. Number six did not change. Number seven went away, and then the two additions were the slope of the parking area.
And drive.
Drive aisle being less than twenty feet.
Drive aisle being less than twenty feet. It didn't specify where I specified or highlighted during the meeting that it was at the garage, but. It's plan a job correctly pointed out that behind the ADA space, there is an area. So some of these didn't specify for, for instance, number six didn't say where the main guy were less. Than twenty five or ten, so that's why I wrote that number eight the way it was written.
I'm fine. I'm fine with the last two waivers as they're written, especially if you will add the, uh, you know, behind the van, etc.
Yeah, I have that, yeah.
Exactly. So that's gonna be on the plan and that's fine with me.
Do, do which one matter?
Just saying, the last, the new waivers, seven and eight.
Right.
As they are written. Look good to me. If Mike is going to update the relevant less than twenty foot driveway with measurement on the plan.
And we add the um. Multiple locations. Was what written that we said, Bill?
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, something. Something saying like, you know, adjacent to, at the, at the dri, uh, the van acceptable spots and. On the north side of the property, right after the main driveway entrance, whatever, something like that. You're good at that wordsmith thing?
I might make, ask you to look at it.
So, yeah, so that makes it a lot easier with, with this here, I mean. I would think that this, these waivers just eclipse what's on the.
I still don't know what I'm voting on. We take it, we're looking to take a vote yet. Because we have Mike's, or sorry, the updated waiver list, which has eight, not seven. We have the, the waivers that, the seven waivers that are in the. Staff report in previous. We, I, I just need to know what I'm voting on, if we're going to do this. And that's why I think it's helpful to have one clean document that has. The exact waivers that are, that are needed, so that it's easy, but.
I think that's just this.
But it's. I would have to go through these word by word to ensure that this is the way that this was previously written or posted.
It is. I mean.
So, so, so we could, we, what you're saying is we could just, we could take this waiver and letter. And vote on the waiver letter.
On some new clean.
We've added waivers that were required after, we found out that we needed after a, a hearings going. I mean, we've had that with, with, you know.
And we also get some fun motions out of you guys, but sometimes we do have to, have to take some words nothing, um, and you'll see that, you know, move your decisions.
I still would prefer a actual review by staff of this, because I'm looking at number two and the numbers don't agree. Between the new and the old. The finer thing, but it's like, we got time, it's just, you're right.
So for number two, the staff report references nine point four point ten. And on the new waiver letter, it references nine point four point.
Now here's you changed yourself.
Yeah, we, we, we renumbered. Um, we.
Yeah, we're good about that part.
We renumbered when we added the DOD um.
But Mike ensured that, to make sure the new waiver letters.
I asked for change number four because there is no A, 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 any marks. Specifically. What I worked it. Okay, so at least couple of two. All good points, but inconsistency.
There's a reference here to four flex retail flex spaces that's no longer part of the project.
Well, no, it is, it was prior. That's why the, the fire number was only the forty three and thirty.
But the previous waiver referred to four retail flex spaces and now the new waiver does not refer to four. Retail flex cases and that is not accessible in here. That means for.
Well, they weren't saying. My point of thought is this, yeah, so relief is on forty three that there is nothing thirty nine.
What does name, I mean, like, when are we gonna do it?
Yeah.
Right, you have thoughts on changing the thirty nine to forty three season?
Oh, did I say thirty nine required?
Yeah.
Okay, so. I took it straight from that. But he's also down, you're also down, so we run out a little longer at thirty two spaces. The files I had to approve was thirty, so I used thirty nine thirty. I was unaware of the forty three.
No, that makes sense.
So if you change it to forty three, that's a file that. I didn't see the initial that approval zone. Or this.
Two years ago, it's like, I don't really understand.
Hey, um.
So when the previous waiver seven is no longer applicable.
Straight, I guess.
Right, then what's happening here?
There's no more, there's no more.
Okay, I'm, I'm satisfied with the.
They just make those little tweaks and send it to me.
I'm satisfied with this based on the changes.
Okay, and Michael sent us a, we can go through them and Mike sent me an update. Letter just to keep it tidy.
When you talk about conditions.
Conditions.
I'm gonna have to see the site like we do, where we just replacing what's there. Or saying in additions or refined.
Yeah, we're gonna reference the, we've referenced the um. The new plan. And um.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna basically have the same vote with a. And so we.
That's right. That's right. That's right. And I just, what I was trying to do was adopt everything else by reference. It was not affected, just to make it easy for the board.
Right.
And, and um. It continues to me.
The. Design guidelines, we've done, I mean, have to say it's. Pretty much the same because we looked at the changes, simply prior review.
It's correct, remains consistent.
So if, if you motion improve this, then I'd. I will have an opportunity to look at the conditions that were discussed just to ensure that.
You all, the decision, I always circulate it around for you guys. I'm asking about that because there is twenty four. I'm making sure to get them right.
What, what'll happen when it's done is on the circuit, as I normally do, you guys, but I'll take a peek at it. Um, decide, you know, usually there's something, some change comes back. In this case, it's a, um. If, you know, we're, we're doing some wordsmithing, if you're unhappy with it, we change it.
If I, if I, if I decided that I would like legal counsel to take a quick look at something, is that also allowed?
Of course.
Just to make sure that it's on or whatever else.
Of course.
I think, you know, keep in mind that you amended meter probably at that time.
Yes.
So, you know, and that's, that's a too much dark, big dark, with, with, oh, well.
Right, it, it, that, you can drop wire, I, I'm. I don't have a same hesitancy for that. This has overlays of waivers and conditions and duty criteria on, on top of. The lawyers that vote stand.
I'll be happy to send it for.
That's, and that's why I keep saying I'm on the trip.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, the thing is that if we go over the, the, the. The conditions, we understand the conditions, there's a, there's a understanding, they're gonna be wordsmithed, they're gonna be. You know, it's not always gonna be as tidy as you'd like it on the first idea, but you certainly the essence of what's being approved, just, just. Discussed at the hearing.
The only thing, keep in mind is once you vote, uh, we have. And needs to issue that.
Hmm, the draft, I think, is that what this, for the draft?
That we, like, we tend to get it.
We'll, we'll, we'll make sure we're, with all. Time lines, what, what.
And so, like, all of our other ones extended out, some of you give us feedback.
We should have time to work on that, this, this, all of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I could review this. Eventually.
Well, they're gonna need to help me this and then get like.
Right, okay, yeah, fine, Friday, oh, we have Friday. Yeah.
I think what we would do is we should send it to you and we would, well, at the same time, uh, together, it's back, it's still being processed soon, but I feel confident that we got.
Got some time?
It doesn't know, but.
Um, I'm, I'm, thank you for continuing to push through this. Um, I, I'm fine with making a motion and then spending time to ensure that the. Condition, alright. I'll, I'll make a motion. Uh, to approve the updated site plan, um, as discussed during this hearing, so by the act. Which would include the landscape plan as well. This is all going to section ten point five point one. The planning board rules and regulations. I also find that the special permit criteria in section ten point four of the downtown overlay district.
Ten four.
Uh, I find that the, um, in accordance with section ten point four, there's no bylaws that be.
You didn't want to get it.
Yeah. And that it meets the criteria. As listed, as I said, as listed in section ten point four, or remains consistent with the criteria, it means consistent with the criteria is section ten point.
Previously adopted, if you have adopted in the original decision, right?
I, I, I also find that the, make a motion to find the um, the special permit criteria in section nine point four point six. That the.
If I, uh, if you do that motion only first, vote on that and then.
Those. Two.
Yeah.
So emotions of site plan and section ten point four. Um. Why?
To make it be near the road.
Okay.
Just to be separate.
Okay, fine. So I made a motion for the site plan and section ten point four, for special permit. Rose, that, thank you. Um, any further discussion on site plan and special permits for, then special permits just as general, especially for. All in favor by voice vote, Bill?
Oh, yeah.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, yes. And.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. I'll make a motion to. Find that the special permit for the downtown overlay district in accordance with section four, nine point four point six. Uh, remains consistent and as previously approved in the original decision. And do I have a second? You do. All in favor of, of that motion, um, Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
I mean, yes, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, I'll make a motion that the modifications I presented are remain consistent with our section ten point six, which discusses the design review. The downtown overlay district. And do I have a second? You do. All in favor of Bill?
Yeah.
Natalie?
Yeah.
I mean, yes, that.
Okay, so.
Yeah. Um. And then. We need to vote on the waivers.
Mm-hmm. We need to vote still on the, the waivers and on, um, yeah, just the waivers.
Conditions of approval?
Okay. Well, the, the site plan, um.
I'll modify that first motion to.
Yeah, to include conditions, okay.
I don't know if I said it, but to modify the first vote on site plan to include the conditions of approval. But second, for that addition, you do, all in favor to include the conditions of approval and the site plan approval vote, Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
I mean, yes, and then.
Yes.
So the conditions are included. In the site plan approval vote. And then waivers, so we still need a motion to approve the waivers?
Yeah, we could, we could, um.
Don't ask me to table that for the next meeting.
Oh.
Don't, please don't.
Um, yeah, just as amended, um, can you, we update and send me a revised? I thought you were gonna amend it, number two is, what is it, forty three? And on, um. Multiple locations and then, uh. What is this Natalie note I made? Oh, oh, you had a addition, Natalie, right?
So you could vote to amend.
For the.
The waivers that.
Waivers. Less than twenty five, was it?
And then. Oh, I was just. That.
Was gonna be represented on the changes on the plan?
Yes, exactly.
And so you're, you're happy with that?
As discussed in the meeting.
Okay, and, and so. Then, um. Mike is going to make the changes to the plan as discussed and send them to me, e-copy.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the waivers, uh, as presented. Um, it has a date of July two thousand point three. Uh, there are eight waivers included. And, uh, the waivers were modified as discussed, uh, just recently during this, um, after the closure of this hearing. Right, a second, you do? All in favor of. That motion? Bill?
Yeah.
Natalie?
Yeah.
I mean, yes, and just. And. Those waivers. You're gonna have to give me those conditions pretty quickly.
Have faith in my job.
I have faith on how busy you are.
Well, the condition is most of, yeah, if you do the conditions, I can get on the front side of the other thing, you get it.
Okay, my right's been here, so I'm my right.
Is.
Thanks.
Bill, anything else on this?
Thank you, Drew.
On this, not on this one.
You're not.
Um, we have the, 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 I mean. The, the, the conditions, why don't you update us on the, um. Phone poles or the, the utility poles?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Amber Star's guy.
Yeah.
Ah, he. Jumped in his car, smoked his fires, threw his ladder on his Subaru and went up, you know, he did what at all. Ever Star's guy, you know, he doesn't return your call.
The guy that we spoke, because we, because Greg gets spoken.
Yes. Yes, I, I don't wanna be wise, but this is six years into this. Yes, I I don't wanna be wise, but this is six years into this.
Yeah, I can understand.
I and I. Crystal is the same way, they don't.
But okay, but just because I I, yeah, I wanna make sure we get, I wanna make.
No one from Everstars Telephone Company, anything ever called you back. So when you were calling us when we're on vacation and did you, but no, you know that they don't call you back. So someday, I don't know when. Hopefully. They want. Everything you could ever possibly ask for, they want a building built before they'll talk to you about moving a pole. You might get that out of them, I bet you Jackie's got twenty five emails to his company. And then you say, oh, you call that guy? Yeah, we call the guy.
So if I go up tomorrow, Jim.
We call him for me, we call him for me, he won't call you back.
If I call, if I go up tomorrow to the town administrator's office and who spoke to the guy.
That's another joke, town administrator's office, that's another joke, but I'm gonna say something in this that I'll be. Because it's six years, right? Six years, six years, go on, click on six years, so I better shut up.
Um, yeah, this.
He called him several times.
The guy that, the guy that Greg spoke to, right, okay, okay.
Called him several times and that gentleman never called him back.
That's right. Sure, I understand, okay, thank you for that.
Um, yeah, I'll do whatever I can to help with um everything. I might want to know what. It's gonna be to help. So let's stay in touch about that.
I don't have the right ladder, otherwise I'd be right there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
You have your.
Yes, thank you.
And take some time to go make sure with conditions, though, are the way that they should be as we discussed.
Sure.
Um, there there's just a lot to take away on this. But we did, um. So stay tuned, you're going to do that. Um, if if you could give them a little, make, give them time to work through this correctly.
I do appreciate it.
Doing it today.
Keeping it going, but I think this is very important to us. That's.
Every step, yeah, so thank you, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thanks, you're welcome. Um, Mike, uh, excellent guy. There was, the design on this was. Challenging and I think it 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 really showed your skill.
That was good, thank you, yeah, oh, yeah, don't leave that, yeah. Thanks, guys.
Okay, um, no meeting minutes?
No meeting minutes, um. We got him caught up, um. Yeah. Um. You saw the September, we have a joint meeting with um act of planning board in September, I have a date. I think it was seventeen, whatever. I I can't, I don't have time. It was. Nineteen. Nineteen, it's right, um, they'll probably be zoomer. Um. Let's see here.
Is there gonna be some prep to that or is going to be?
Uh, there'll be some prep for it, uh, matter of fact, we're we're meeting on it tomorrow or Thursday, yeah. Uh, what we've got is a um. Somewhere, wrote all that stuff though. Um. Yeah, it it it's, um, the draft will be draft, um, they're they're coming up with uh some changes that were pretty interesting. Uh, with um. Oh, here, okay, so those. Um. Yeah, but yeah, the answer is yes, Billy, you'll have some material before it and um some drafts. Um. The other thing I had is that, um, this kind of weird one, we're gonna have next uh. Planning board meeting of um a second one for October or for uh. For August. Um. We have, if you recall from Major Crossing, we have a tractor supply. A garden type store that's. Gonna be going into one building that was um called out in the original site plan. Here's the question that I'm gonna, we're gonna have to think about, I'm gonna, because I'm gonna bring them for determination. Of minor, minor or major to you guys. Um. I'm gonna send out a little something for you all to review, it's it's. I'm not sure that we have to even do anything. Um, on this, and I'll make my case in a uh email I'm gonna send to each of. Um. And it's based on the idea that. There was an allowance made. For. Parking lot display of merchandise. And it's not a permanent loss of the space. So I'll send it all to you and and um it's a little wonky, but it's interesting, you'll you'll find it interesting, I see what you think, and. This is a major crossing at the tractor. Location and. It's a garden store, like.
Yeah, I want the tractor location, the 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 next. They will, they're proposing that their next building. Which hasn't been started yet, we will include. Um, a tractor supply stores, what they had us in that.
Well, it's called Tractor Supplies, it actually doesn't have tractors.
Yeah, that's, they 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 communicated that to us, and so. Um, that will have potentially some modifications to site plan. Maybe.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think so, it's a weirdo, I've never run into it.
Yeah.
Um, and I wanna see what you guys think, it it may be a minor modification, it may be a major, I don't think it is, or maybe nothing.
We're treating it as a minor major determination?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm gonna, but the point is that I'm gonna send you some weird stuff first. Yeah.
They're gonna wanna park a lawn mower or a chip parking spot.
Yeah, in other words, in our bylaws, in in the zoning bylaws, it talks about.
Right.
It talks about, there's going to be a garden supply store here, we're going to, there's a parking ratio that breaks it down.
Yeah.
It says you can use whatever this, however many spots for this. Um, and and it calls out pretty specifically. And I I'm not hundred percent sure what to do to make it tidy. So it's just gonna be unusual, I'll send you, I'll 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 spell it out.
It's like when they put out pallets and flowers and spray.
Yeah, yeah, so is that, i- i- you know, if, when Home Depot, when you look and they put a. The the trees or the plants out there in the parking lot, is that, are you losing bargain? Or is that so?
Whole year.
So. Yeah, I guess it does too. But does it, I mean, are you amending the site plan when you do, you know, when you do that, you put. If you put merchandise out there and.
We're getting into the determination right now.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's 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 a.
It sounds fascinating, I can't wait for your email.
What else, what else?
Um. That I think that's um, I, oh, the only other thing. For that?
No, no, sorry, didn't the fire, didn't the fire chief request um change on the site plan?
Yes, but it might not be ready the next time. Oh, um, the fire chief is asking about moving the dump, they they're right now, there's small dumpsters. The the little, you know, trash receptacles. That they're gonna wanna put a fence, a um screened off dumpster. Uh, and um, so we'll, that'll be a minor major determination too, but I haven't gotten it yet, but I do expect that coming. Um. The kennel thing will be our next meeting. Um. And I think that's, I I feel like I forgot something, but we could sit. Um, oh, no, I I started to tell you. Tomorrow I'm meeting, um, if if you, if you wanna poke in, it's on Zoom too, um. Two powder melts coming in for a um. Just a meeting uh to go with staff over a couple of things, so if if you'd like to come, I've got, uh, they've hired Mark Bobrowski. Uh, is a guy who's. He wrote her.
No, we we keep everything real close around here.
Well.
Well, we didn't do that, that was not. Wow, sure, right, that, I don't know, as an ecosystem.
Yeah.
The ecosystem.
That that's all I got, guys. Um, yeah.
Good meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move the call to the meeting. Second, uh, all in favor by voice, Bill?
Yeah.
Natalie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
It's five children, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thanks, Ben.